Okay, thank you, and we will now open the Estacada City Council meeting. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, the wicked sand, my nation, under God, the good, worthy, and just for all.
Can I have roll call, please, city?
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Liddkey.
Here.
Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Prokop.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Ten Bush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkland.
Here, thank you very much, city. We are at our first presentation, Ant Farm is here. So Numpa, step up to the mic and tell us all about yourself. All right, my name is Two Foxes Singing, and I go by Numpa. And I'm the Executive Director for Ant Farm, so it's a privilege to be here and talk tonight. I realized when I was thinking about talking tonight, one of the things I wanted to start with is who I am. Because I think that's a very important thing. I am a founder of Ant Farm, started Ant Farm. Actually, we've been doing this twenty some years. So it started as part of our spiritual community where we were helping youth and elders. Those are the two populations that we want to support the most. A little bit about me, I live up on Mount Hood, ten acres, I've always been a farm boy, grew up in Missouri. And so it's been, I moved into Portland, I lived in the big city for all of about three years and decided that I couldn't be there. So Ant Farm came about, I'm actually a licensed occupational therapist, so for thirty-nine years I've been a therapist. I worked in the mental health and addictions field for all that time. A lot of those years was in Missouri, where I was the Director of an Occupational Therapy Department, and inpatient psychiatry, day treatment psychiatry, so I've done a lot of work in these years. And then I moved to Portland and worked up at the VA Medical Center for three years, focused on veterans, so that was certainly a good time of my life. I left there to become a faculty person at Pacific University, so I taught at the university in the Occupational Therapy Program. I missed service, and so I went back to work and worked for Mental Health Services West in downtown Portland. At that point, it was a very powerful experience because we were approaching the shift from fee-for-service in the medical profession to managed care. For folks that know managed care, it just decimated the system. It went from thousands of dollars coming into the system to very little. My predominant population that I worked with at that time was severely and persistently mentally ill people. And I was, actually, I worked as a social security payee for over six hundred people with mental health issues. So, so I was really kind of in it in Portland. Absolutely enjoying the work, but it was also rather intensive. Ninety-eight, I think it was, when the managed care went fully into force and all the mental health agencies in the Portland metro area, actually in the state, they all began to collapse. So Clackamas County chose me at that point to step in, and I was at point of doing a number of mergers. So Mental Health Services West with Garland Center, who went bankrupt, with CCMH, with Delany, so I could just go on in the list. But during that time, it was, it was a fairly rough time in the system because what we were seeing, like the Garland Center, doors got locked up, and literally overnight with bankruptcy, there was a thousand clients with no, no services at all. So it was, it was a pretty eventful two years, figuring out how to bring organizations together and people together. A lot of experience during that time, as the payee for social security for those people, it was rough. Because I had to help the county kind of sort out records and bankruptcy proceedings and all these kinds of things. So there was a point in all of that that I decided that mental health, certainly the system in downtown Portland, the state, I just really didn't want it anymore. Doing quality, a lot of quality managements, billing departments, those kinds of things. So I stepped back for a while, hung out on the mountain, and then I stepped in and started a youth development program with Youth Opportunity Centers in two thousand and three or two, or somewhere in there. During that time, again, it was great, there was money flowing and there were services going out, and so I managed a diverse program of about twenty-seven people. And we did northeast Portland, downtown Portland, and all what was called the Enterprise Zones, which are people of poverty. So I didn't, I did that for a while, and then also decided that Portland, I just didn't really, I was, I'd already moved up the mountain. And as I was driving through Portland, or through Sandy, I would see kids on the street. And, and it just didn't make sense to me, I mean, I was starting to go earlier and earlier and earlier to beat the traffic so I could get into Portland. And so in two thousand and nine, I think eight or nine, I quit my work, and I founded Ant Farm. At that point, we've got, we've got some stimulus funds, I put a crew of kids to work, and we gutted the old Garter, Gardner plumbing store there in Sandy, for those that know it. Those kids, the angry kids got sledgehammers, we took down walls, the landlord was super happy, and we built Ant Farm, the Cafe and Bakery. That was two thousand and ten, now we're at two thousand and twenty-three, so thirteen years later. I gave, Melanie, I think you probably gave the council like a sheet with a bunch of our programs and stuff, so I'm not going to go through all of those things, but but the last thirteen years has been really super powerful. Because basically, we started creating programs, and it wasn't like we created programs because we had a design. We created programs because it was what we needed to do, it was the community needed it. So the very first thing that started happening, and we're seeing it over and over, and we're seeing it everywhere we go, is kids coming through the door, parents coming through the door saying, I need a job, I need a job. So we, without any curriculum, started doing work, and we ended up, we've now, let me see, we've probably had thirty-seven contracts with the BLM, Mount Hood National Forest. We've got a huge fuel, fuel reduction crew right now, and we've got another crew probably going out very shortly. So we're, the workforce element of what we do just took off. Every summer, our internship program moved from twenty to thirty to forty. Now we have a hundred and twenty kids every single summer. And we just got awarded another twenty from Malala, that will be working out of Malala. Here in Estacada for three or four years now, we've had a crew at the school every single summer. And so it's been a, it's been a pretty exciting time in the workforce development. Our referral process, our criteria, come in the door. That's it. Like, we're not about a lot of extra paperwork, we're not kind of an elemental P-type organization where you have to have certain credentials or anything, we're really about what does the community need and where do you show up? In that, there was an elder, his name was Ken Havda. You can, you can look it up in Sandy, there is a Ken Havda Day now. This gentleman came in, overalls hat, he looks at me and he says, I need kids. And I was kind of like, you need kids? Okay, for what? And he was like, to work. So I took three boys at the time, we jumped in the truck, drove up to the hospice, and Ken was doing volunteer work there. At this point, I mean, he was an old man, he was, he was seventy-five years old. And so we started working with him, and that was the beginning of what we call Community Connect. That, that program is just like heart and soul, it's, it's, it's one of the best things we've ever done. Because every day we go out with crews of kids now, and we help senior citizens. And in those, in those, we never charge, we've never charged kids, we've never charged seniors for that program. And that's been a pretty powerful thing. Ken was just a rock. He was one of these community people, there was a woman at the bottom of Ten Eyck that one time, like, she was, like, her husband had died, and she was struggling, and she called, and she said, I need some help, and we went down there, we got her a bunch of wood, and Ken went every single day. He got the key to her house, went every single day at like four in the morning and started her wood stove for her. Because her husband was gone, and that's, that's the kind of man he was. And so he really very quickly became our, our elder. It was, it was hard, because for about three years he was with their crews, and he went from being up on the roof cleaning gutters to sitting on five-gallon buckets, and and then one day he came to me and he said, Numpa, when I go, I need a party. I can't believe I'm telling this story right now, but that's all right. And I was like, okay, I mean, I didn't really understand, and he says, no, I, I need a party when I go, and I said, when you go, and he says, yeah, when I die. And I said, all right, okay, why are you telling me that? Why not marry his wife? And he said, because you're the man to do it. I was like, okay. About a week later, he, he passed, and so Ken, Ken, you know, for me, I still get choked up about it because this man was just like, he drove for Meals on Wheels, and he would, he did everything in the community. And I remember after he passed, a number of kids just didn't know what to make of it. And I was like, this is what happens, and so we put on the wall of Ant Farm from one end all the way to the end, his birth. Birth all the way to death, his experience of life, and we honored him, and that place was packed. It was such a good day, and then the city voted to have a Ken Havda Day. So I don't know, I share that story because, I'm not sure why I share that story, except that I got story after story after story, I mean, we've had just such an incredible experience building this organization from nothing. We, we do can't, we collect cans and bottles, we've got actually at this point, three gardens. And of course, the Cafe and Bakery kind of became a hub of things, it's like, we realized we weren't really making money, and the board, so you know, we're, we've got a board of directors, very strong group of people. Initially, they were very kind of professional names of people all over Portland, and once we really became very centered in Sandy, we, our board became Sandy people. And, and so our board really like has embraced this kind of movement with community. So we've got cans and bottle program where we have can and bottle trailers everywhere. We have a semi-truck of cans and bottles pulling out of the outdoor building every week. That helps us with insurance, it helps us, our insurance is very expensive. And it also gives kids the ability to come and get their hands dirty, and literally get their hands dirty. Lots, cans and bottles are not a pretty thing. But it's been a cool thing because we talk recycling, we talk just what needs to be done. We, Youth Corps is the program, that's Neil over there, he's our, he's actually a contractor, and he's also our Director of Workforce Development. And Youth Corps, this man has turned this program into amazing things. Like I said, a hundred and twenty kids every summer, but you know, we've got crews going out every day right now. And then he also runs Community Connect, which is the service program. So Community Connect and Youth Corps, and Youth Corps now is expanded into businesses. So we're connecting to the businesses here in town, in Malala and in Sandy. And so we've got a lot of funds right now to actually get kids in businesses. Interesting, prior to COVID, no businesses really wanted kids. I mean, it was, it was about liability, it was about risk, it was about all these things, and now, post-COVID, because people need employees, and there's so many, there's been so many struggles, there's a, there's a demand. So we're excited about that part of the program, too. We run the Mount Hood Farmers Market. In Sandy, the city had it, they didn't want it, handed it to us a few years back, and that's been a pretty exciting program, too. So we've built a pretty strong market. And Youth and Family Services, which is a core of everything we do, what I would say is we've done a lot of movement in that. We do have, there's been a lot of talk in this town about homelessness, we do not have an adult homelessness program, so I need to say that out loud. Because I think there's been a fair amount of focus on us having an adult program, and we don't have an adult program. I know in Estacada, like, three homeless people to my name. Because, and they're the people that have come to the warming centers. So, so for me, we do have a strong youth homeless program. And we call it actually unaccompanied, unaccompanied youth, they're the kids that don't have, no, let me restate that, they have families, but the families might not be present. The families, there might be a number of things, alcohol, work, whatever, but these kids are on their own. From the beginning of time, when we came into Sandy, we had homeless kids. Valerie, who's sitting right over there, I mean, we have sat in the corner of the cafe with kids coming down off of drugs. The city has brought kids to us, we've seen people nodding out in the bathroom, we have seen it all. And that's not because we attract it, it's because we're there to help. One of the things that's really, really cool is, and I'm going to go backwards, when I was working with Cascadia Behavioral Health in Portland, I was actually a key player in starting Project Respond. Project Respond, and I don't even know where it is nowadays, I have no idea. But that program was one of the most powerful programs because we took mental health professionals and addictions professionals and put them in with the police. And so whenever police would get a call, there was a crisis call, Project Respond would go along. I love that program, it was one of the most, my most favorite experiences because over and over and over we would come, the police would be put into these positions with these mental health people, and then we would assist with figuring out what to do, triaging, getting them into a psych hospital, that kind of thing. So with Sandy, it's different, it's not Portland Police, but with, with Sean and Ernie, it's been just an incredible experience. Because I feel like they represent community, community policing in a very strong way, and so one of the things that's happened with them is they actually now bring us kids. So as opposed to arrest, a lot of times they'll come with kids, or we'll get called to a place, and it's typically Valerie or I, and we'll go and we'll just help assess or try to figure out what's going on. So I guess your past does kind of follow you in that. Our homeless and unaccompanied program is also here, it's funded for here in Estacada, and we have, we have a fair number of kids here as well. They're not the typical homeless kids that you would see, well, none of ours. You can't compare urban to rural homeless kid situation, you just can't. Because pretty much they always have a place to go, but it's somebody else's house, or it's somebody else's garage, or it's somebody else's couch, or something like that. So we've got that program going on, we have an alcohol and drug prevention program here in Estacada, that's now three years of making, and in Sandy. We're launching soon, and I really would invite everybody to be a part of this, what's called a Pass Portal system. We're taking the traditional passport, businesses are getting involved, and there's going to be stickers and all these kinds of things, and we're targeting sixth graders up to ninth graders. With those youth, what we want to do with Pass Portal is we want to have them go into a business, their families go into business, have conversations. There might be a little activity, they get a stamp, and then after so many stamps, they get these stickers, and then after so many stickers, they get some parties or rewards. So we're still working on that, this is a large grant that we've been doing, it'll go for five years. But we're pretty excited because there's actually some national attention towards it, this Pass Portal program. Because of the Alcohol and Drug Coalition that works with us on that. Pass Portal, Cafe and Bakery tutoring, we've been doing a lot of tutoring through the years, and we've seen the population change. Initially, we got high school kids and middle school kids, and now it's dropped to little, little ones. And a lot of times it's the little ones because the parents are super frustrated with them, and the parents are like, I can't deal with this kid kind of thing, and so we're able to take them and work with them. The tutoring program, COVID did a number, it did not do a number on us, actually, strangely enough, because for us, it was like, I wasn't going to like, I was going to like COVID tickets out, so it didn't. We had to shut the cafe for a bit of time, and then re, and we tried doing the online thing with kids, but it just doesn't work, and I'm not really a fan. And so in the end, we kept our programs going the whole time. But COVID did do a number on the kids, I feel like, I think that the, the online stuff, the learning how to manipulate the computer, that, there's just so many things that shifted in this. So, so for us right now, we're watching the bounce back from COVID in, in our kids, and it's rough. We have a lot of kids running, we have a lot of kids cutting, we have a lot of kids saying F you to people. There's a lot of blatant disrespect, and it's not easy. But it's, but it's what is right now. Access Learning Center, I'm just going to go through my list really quick, garden, pass portal prevention. Well, and I guess the, the obvious in COVID is that one of the ways that we did stay afloat, and we made a choice, is when COVID hit, we applied for a grant with the county to do rent assistance. One grant for like four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars evolved to two years of fourteen million dollars. So we did fourteen million dollars of service, and the bulk of that money, like twelve million, thirteen million of it went to the people. We had, at one point in two thousand and eleven or twelve, we had sixteen hundred families, I think we ended up with twenty-two hundred families that we supported. So COVID, rent assistance, isolation quarantine, we did a lot of work there. And our, and our program expanded quite a bit during that time. So I could keep rolling on this stuff, but you know, I'm open to questions, Estacada specifically. What I want to say is that we did buy Harmony Bakery. Since we bought that bakery, we recognized that that building needs a lot of work. So we slowed down the idea that we were going to open it quickly. Neil's done, he's on number six of the CAD drawings, I think, at this point. We needed ADA bathrooms in there, so there's just a lot of things in that building that needed some help, so we've slowed that whole process down. And you know, right at the point that the fire started, I shook hands with our landlord on Zobrist. We started in on some urban development, fires rolled. I shifted gears, I was doing the Estacada Collaborative at that time, as a facilitator. We were going to put up a tent into a welcome center, and I was like, well, what's going on down at with ECW? And the folks there were like, I don't know, and so I made a point to go down and see. And I felt really good about that, I worked with Joel and Brandy, and that was amazing operation. It kicked some butt, and so for me, that experience was super powerful. Because it was just like, right there on the grounds with people. And so I, that actually launched for us, then, we are now the fiscal sponsor for the Long-Term Recovery Group of Clackamas County. So we manage the state funds that come through, there's over a million dollars right now rebuilding houses. And even with the Milo MacGyver fire, we were in on that right away with getting some funds out to some people for some rebuilding. So yeah, I could just keep going, I mean, there's a lot of things we got going on, but I'll leave it to you for questions, concerns, thoughts, whatever. All right, I think Joel had the first question.
I was just going to say, we're good, and it's been thirty minutes, and we got a big thing on us, that's all I was going to say, because you looked like you have a lot of things going on there. I guess if I have any question, I would just want to curious with the statuses on the, the building that the open renewal had granted funds for, is that completed, or?
It's well completed, we are, the Estacada School District is going to sublease part of that with us, with their transitional classroom. Yeah, it's been completed, we've been using it, that's where we've had the warming centers, the two warming centers. Sarah, the fire person's been down there, looked at, yeah, it's, it's a really nice building, and we'd invite anybody to come by and see it, yeah. Any other questions? No, we appreciate you.
Cool.
And thank you for giving us an outlay of what it is you do, it's good to have you in here, and it's good to see the work you're doing with the youth.
Yeah, we got a lot going on, I didn't even really touch it all, but that's all right.
All right, we are at Citizen and Community Group Comment, and I have one in front of me, Juan Luna.
Hi, everybody, thank you for having me here. I guess, well, a lot of people already knows me very much. We, I'm one of the owners from the pub behind Justin Vidal and Kellen's Dogs, and then for, for, we have our business in Estacada for the last almost two years now. And then we had no problems. The beginning, the year, a year ago, we have some homeless people try coming and installing our cables, from electric, the electric cables, you know, they plug it. And for some reason, it stopped, but now, lately, we have that issues again. So some people start jumping at ten thirty in the night. My, in our parking lot, and jumping and hit one of my customers behind my truck. So who's in charge of that people, who's in charge of that people, it's a homeless things, you know what I mean? We feel safety, now we feel unsafety. At ten thirty at night, who's, who's had things to come in, do bad things to everybody else? Now they take it, I had, we, me and my, my college, we had towels, they take a towels, dirty towels from my business. This isn't all my business, this isn't all my college business. So they take it a whole dirty, we had towels, and then we had to leave the towels outside. When, every two weeks, they come in and pick them up. So they take in the whole thing and leave with the towels, from my business and for the boba business. And at the same time, they try to get the cables again from our business. So the insurance is, they might cover something, but we had to put more money in our pocket. So we feel now more unsafe than what was before. So I don't know who's, we need more, I believe we need more police checking the area. And I'll be asking, please, if somebody can do anything about the lights, have more lights around the food trucks, because it's kind of dark at nighttime. And people jumping from the fence behind the ICR, ACR, from the, you know, the forget, sorry. TCCR, yeah, it's not, it's not a fan there, and the people jumping from that fan and burying my customers in the middle of the parking lot at ten thirty. So if it's anything, I mean, anything, anybody can do something about it?
I can't answer to that right now, but we can look into our police services and see if maybe they can make some more patrols in that area, and as far as the lighting goes, I think we'd have to sit there and go over that with PGE and, and look and see if there's something we can do to increase that. But there is ways, so we will look into that, definitely.
Well, I do know our Chief of Police is back there, so you've got the information, so I'll do anything you can do on that regards. I do, you did email me about that, I got the pole number, I was meant to give it to you, Melanie, and I'll get that to you after the meeting, just remind me where we can request a light in that area. So, and I will get that information, so we can see if we get a light moving there. And as far as the homeless in the area, I think the biggest thing is that when, you know, we need to, if their law enforcement identifies someone who has, is violating the violating, good golly, trespassing rules, or if there's, if they're breaking a crime, then they just need to be able to enforce that and remove them, and then there are some things I'm going to address when our Chief of Police speaks here in a minute, so you can hear those as well, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, we appreciate your time, thank you. Okay, moving right along, we are at the Consent Agenda, you've all had a chance to read over the Consent Agenda, are there any questions, anything needs to be moved?
The, can we pull the thriving communities grant down to Council Business, I had a couple of questions on that, so.
Is that okay with that, move it down to Council Business, okay? We'll take that off and move it down to Council Business. And on the rest of it, any other questions? So can I have a motion to move?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
First, do I have a second?
Second.
We're first and second, all those in paper say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay. We are down at Department and Committee Reports. So I will start, do any of you have meetings with your committees or commissions that you'd like to speak on tonight?
So I will start. Did any of you have meetings with your committees or commissions that you'd like to speak on tonight?
Yeah, so the school district met um last Wednesday and I was, unfortunately, I wasn't able to go, but I was able to watch it online. I am in the throes of getting my girls ready for state competition this weekend for cheerleading, so. It was, it was practice time. So anyway, I was able to watch it and. Um, a lot of information was presented, so. One of the big highlights was um, right now Estacada School District is at a record high for. On-time graduation. They've never reached this percentage before and it's eighty seven percent. And while that's not, you know, a hundred percent, that's. As high as it's ever been, so um, it's kind of a big deal. And then um, kind of a, uh, so right now they are number four in the county, so Laco. Number one for graduation and West Lynn. And then um, North Clackamas is number three and then we're number four. So out of nine schools in the district, so that's. That's a big deal. So here's a little, it's a little fun fact. Um, we have fifty one percent of our students. In the district that um are experiencing poverty. Whereas Laco has four percent, so. Our district works with some really challenging circumstances and children, and so the fact that they can. Get those kids up and graduating for. A better future. I don't know. I just, I just thought that was like really, really great, so. Anyway, um, nine percent up in proficiency than last year for. Um, a hundred percent of the essential learning standards, which. I didn't really. At the time until they broke it down in the meeting, I was like, oh, that's actually like a really, really big jump. They were, were the HVAC update, so I presented about. Three or four months ago, that the school district was looking into doing the mini splits for HVAC getting in um. Like AC units and stuff and they did a, kinda did a survey and a scan of all the school, of all the schools in the district and. Which rooms got, you know. Got the hottest and that sort of thing, and they were gonna do the mini splits in those rooms. So they had budgeted. Um, about two hundred and eight. Thousand dollars and. The lowest bid was for seven hundred and sixty one K. So they are three hundred percent higher than what they budgeted for, which was really, really unfortunate. Um, so it's kind of back to the drawing board and they're looking for some creative and innovative ways to get some of those rooms cooled off because. We do have those. Very warm days toward the end of the school year and especially at the beginning of the school year, September time, just those rooms just get really hot, so. They're still working on it. They're not giving up. And um, yeah, so that was kind of a bummer. Um, strategic planning is kicking off. Um, they're reaching out to the community. Um, the strategic plan that they had expires this year, so they're gonna, they're working on a current strategic plan for the next five years going forward. And then they did a little update on the, sorry, it's a long report. They did a little update on the four-day school week, since we switched from a five-day school week to four-day. And um, so. Student outcomes increased by nine percent, um, employee retention increase. Or improved by ninety two percent. Um, student attendance only improved by one percent, employee attendance improved by seven percent, and extra work completion improved by seven percent. They did add the caveat to the one percent student attendance was just the fact that there's just been. That onslaught of illness during kind of that Thanksgiving, pre-Christmas time. Um, yeah, and right now they're doing, kind of taking some polling for a school bond in twenty twenty four. Um, they're, they're just kind of feeling the waters out for that and. Um, that was just kind of a preliminary report they did on that, so. That's your score report.
That's nice. That's very good. Thank you. And that ties into what Muppa's doing over there. It makes a lot of sense. The numbers kind of go together.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's, that's great. Thank you, Jerry.
Um, so quick, quick one for the arts commission, they uh, they've. Um, they're setting their calendar for events that they're going to do throughout the year. Um, i- it's gonna be very exciting once uh, once their calendar gets set and the amount of events that they have planned. Um, it's uh, it's gonna be a fun year for Estacada. Uh, in the arts community. Um, and then the DEIC met mostly just went over their uh, goals for the year. Um. And then uh, had a little quick. Uh, talk about the, the applicants, so they've got three open seats and they have three applicants, so. Um, talked about those applicants and uh. Good discussion and uh. Pretty much, you know, like I said, they just set their goals for their year. One thing that they did really um. Get into was uh. Um, they were considering putting a budget, you know, putting out their own budget for um. The words there, um, translation services. Um, but through discussion, um, we, you know, the, it was kind of agreed on that that should be a ci- city budgeted item, not just a. DEIC budget item, but there should be a city budget line for translation services for. You know, for city, for the city to use, for council to use, for all the commissions and committees to use, so. Um, that's gonna be a uh, further discussion going with the. You know, moving forward with the city, an actual budgeted line for translation services, so.
No, thank you for that report. Any other ones? Okay, we are at the city manager's report.
Right, thank you, everybody. Um, I have a few things to share. First of all. I wanted to report back on questions that were asked at the previous council meeting. Um, so I'll just go over those real quickly. Uh, first of all, it was, the question was asked, how much does, this is in refer- in reference to our wastewater treatment plant. Um, how much does growth affect the function of the ammonia plant that is at the wastewater treatment plant? And I did check with Kurt McLeod, our engineer about that. His response was. That the ammonia situation is a treatment process, difficult, treatment process difficulty. Um, and he expects that DEQ will provide some relief from that limit with a mutual agreement order. To extend into our, until our new wastewater plant is built. DEQ is working with Chris, our plant director. On remedial upgrades to get the ammonia tower to work better, and he does not think that residential growth is limited by. The failure to meet the ammonia limits. Um, what does limit the residential growth is limited. By, and this I can't explain to you, but I'll tell you what he said, by hydraulics, which I know is the water and then. BOD and TSS treatment. So there's a different, there's other things in the plant that. Um, could limit our, our um. Growth, you know, our uh, residential growth. Um, but he said that he does not think DEQ is currently limiting residential approvals, but. We'll see how they respond at the next submittal when we, if another annexation is requested or something. Um, the growth of the community um has slowed. So that should give DEQ some assurance that the city can meet permit for the next few years. So, and that seems like a bold statement to just say that growth has slowed, but just to share um, our single-family residence permits. Um, the permit applications received in twenty twenty one was two hundred and seventeen. And in twenty twenty two, it was sixty seven. So, so, but then the um certificate of occupancies. In twenty twenty one was a hundred and seventy five and in twenty twenty two, a hundred and forty seven, so it has decreased. And that is the end of that answer.
Uh, yeah, so you, I didn't actually hear an answer to the question of. Does increased growth. Effect directly the concentration of ammonia?
No, because it is the process that is. Um, that is causing the ammonia plant. It's not necessarily growth. We could have a smaller number or a larger number. It's the process of how it's happening. That needs to get fine tuned. No matter how much.
Do we have something that shows that? Cuz it, I mean, general logic would say if you have a hundred gallons flowing through there of. Waste and then you have a thousand gallons of flowing through the waste. That you're gonna get a higher ammonia level cuz it can only treat properly. So much, according to what they were just saying. So do we have something that shows it otherwise? Because. Logically, doesn't, it doesn't add up, is basically what I'm asking. So do we have something you can provide that would show that it doesn't affect it? I'm kind of curious.
I could look into that, other than what Kurt has just explained.
It, this, it didn't seem to answer the question to me, and so i- if maybe you can just send it to me separately, cuz I'd like to see that, so.
Okay, I did, I for, I sent that out to the council, but let me see if there's a um. Let me write it down real quick. So can we explain? In greater detail?
I, I just want something showing me in writing that that does not affect it, so. Like, and how it doesn't affect it. Based upon the process.
What? The formula?
Formula would be fine. I'd like to see how that's calculated, so because it, it does logically, it doesn't make sense. So I'd like to see what the problem is there, so.
Okay, I can tell you that it was.
My, my concern is not about the housing. My concern is about the water we're putting into our, into our river.
And that's what DEQ is working with.
I, I get that they're giving us a waiver. That I, I understand that piece of it, but if the water is being more and more contaminated because of higher ammonia levels. DEQ may not be finding us for it. But it's still putting higher ammonia levels into our water where people fish and play in and stuff. That's my concern.
Okay, I, I think I understand that. I will delve a little further into that and see if I get a better answer. I don't know if the percentages. Of ammonia is higher. Um, but I can, I'll, I'll try to.
I'm trying to, uh, so that's, I'm trying to get those questions answered. If you could send it to me separately, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I, I just wanna chime in here. I, I think this is an area, the, the first council ground rules that we have is honor the expertise in the room. Um, the, the question was brought up. Our city manager went to our city engineer. We got an answer. Um, from, from my standpoint, I don't know what the consensus is. Of the council here, but I'm, I'm. I'm good with what the city engineer came back with here. I, I understand one counselor has an issue or a concern. I, I appreciate that, but in terms of time spent on this, um, we're asking city to spend more time on this. When the DEQ, this is an issue with them, this is an issue that it sounds like our, our wastewater treatment plant's aware of. And um. It seems like it's in good hands. I, I don't know that we need to spend any more time on it than has been spent already.
And I think he asked for a personal. A reference to that, not something we're gonna bring up in here, so that, that is addressed. Thank you. Uh, any other questions?
Um, okay, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
All right, so the second question that was asked last time is, when will the SDC update be updated for our new wastewater treatment plant? Staff is currently working on that. Um, it is a bit of a process, and so we don't have it ready immediately, but it will be, it is in process to be completed and will be coming before you in the next. Couple months, I would say. Um, as far as that goes. And then um, I was asked for a. Um. About the Wade Creek Park three in the community building. And at what, uh, one of the questions was, at what point does the city council get involved in managing a contract? Because this is an overrun on time. And I do have a, um, I have a presentation to give you an update on that, but I did check with the city attorney. Um, and as far as council assisting with contract management, um, Peter Watts explained that. He said generally the council would not be involved in management of contracts. This is in general, not just this one. Um, usually council sets the vision and values for the community and then rely on staff for implementation. That helps avoid triangulation and confusion. The risk of the council directly interfacing with the contractor is that it might result in change orders that the city wasn't aware of. And that's why it's usually best to have one point of contact, and we have actually hired um, Dave Piper. He's been um, working with us as just kind of a. Um, he's just doing this one project with us at this point, and he is our point of contact between the contractor. And the city and the um engineering and design firm. Um, but Pete, Peter did say that he thinks if the council emailed the city manager that they were very disappointed in the delays and I was able to pass that along to the contractor. That that would be appropriate. Um, so it's definitely okay to express um concern. But um, that would be Peter's recommendation. Um, and I do have the, I do have a, like, just a five-slide. Um, presentation here about um, the questions that were asked regarding. Uh, the plant was. Um, what are the major causes? Of delay? And first of all, we had, um, this was a cra- kind of a crazy time to start a massive project like this, but we did it. Um, and so in the, and we're supposed to start in summer of twenty twenty one, we applied early in twenty twenty one for our Army Corps of Engineer permit. They know we have an in-water work window that is, it goes from July fifteenth to the end of August. And they did not get us our permit in time, um, so we were um. Six weeks, it was actually like, um, it was from June twenty eighth, we would have been able to, ready to start. And they did not have that permit issued, which was the first thing we had to do until um, August sixth. Um, and so that was the, that was the initial delay, should have been a sign that I took, I guess, but. Um, they were, um, then they got into removing the pond sediment and. There was. An extra five weeks of dredging out the pond sediment because it was much deeper than they anticipated it being. Um, and we went, we all. Um, Dawn and Dave Piper, myself, um, are the engineer. Um, and architect, the landscape architect went up there for like, hmm. I think it's probably not quite as bad as you're saying. It was a mess, that, the, the muckiness underneath that pond was. Very deep and it just, it needed to be removed and set aside to dry, so. That took an extra five weeks and then we had some unseasonable weather. Um, and then we've had so much unseasonable weather, I can't remember which one this was, and whether it was in the spring. Or whether, I think that was in the spring, cuz remember it rained till like June, the end of June last year. Um, so that was a delay and then other, other delays that was approximately four months of time, but. The problem is, is right, right off the bat, once you, once you get off schedule, um, then it kind of jams up the rest of the schedule too, and so. You know, they had um subcontractors planning to come in at certain times, so it's just been, it's been a struggle pushing forward, but our contractor, I will say. Has been doing excellent work. They've been taking care of problems when they came up. One thing I forgot to put on here was um, when we were doing the culvert, which was a massive project, I don't know. And I couldn't find any pictures. I, I lost the pictures. I have to dig through and find them. Um. It turned out there was a sewer line. That did not. They didn't, we didn't realize how high it was, and so we ended up having to redesign, do a redesign of the road. That's why when you go over the culvert now, there's a little bit of a rise because. Um, had to, so that was a un- unforeseen thing that happened. Um, with that sewer line being higher than it was anticipated to be. Um, Reliance Connects was great with moving some very critical infrastructure. That was the, the most technical part of the project, I think, so, but those were some of the delays. And this is just a cool picture. It shows in December of twenty twenty one. Um, they were trying to get that creek, the creek bed laid in there and we just had a massive amount of rain and. It shows how it's working when it comes. Um, when it overflows, it would overflow the bank. Now there's plants there, so it would kind of um, hold the soil in place better, but they were working through that. And here's just a couple of pictures from February. And then we had, I, I did a couple more in June, just showing some progress. Um, and then I think in September, here's a building in September. And um, it's turning out beautifully and then November, I like to go up there on sunny days, you can tell. Um, but it's, it's turning out beautifully, it's just um. It's been a push to get it going forward. So here's, the next question was, what work is remaining to be done? Um, in the park part of it, we need to complete uh, the aggregate trail, which is um. The, it's a small gravel. Trail, finish the irrigation, finish the landscaping. The building still has some siding to be done. There's a metal screen that's decorative, that's gonna go. On the front part of the building behind the stage. Um, there's the door, automatic door openers for ADA, door handles, it's kind of the little, the details that are coming together now. Um, install the cabinets, the tiles, plumbing, um, plumbing the fixtures in the cabinet. Um, getting the partition in there and the downspout, so we're close. And the estimate from the contractors that work will be completed by April fifteenth. Um, so that puts April, May, June, so that's, that's ten months behind schedule, but. Um. It, they are, they are completely responsive, they're working hard, they're doing good work every time that we go out there. Dave's been out there a lot. Um, are. Anybody that, any of the, like, O-TAC or Greenworks comes out and they're very happy with the work that is being done. Um, so that is where we are. We've got just a couple more months to go. And are there any questions on that?
All right, so it's ten months behind the schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I'm really happy to hear that it's gonna be delivered by spring, so we can have it for the summer. That's awesome. There's a couple of things that don't add up. And I'm gonna ask the questions because I believe the people of Estacada deserve to understand what three and a half million dollars and why we're ten months behind, at least how the question's answered for them. So according to, can you bring the slide back up to it? Talked about the delays, please. All right, so it should have started with the pond by July fifteenth, and I understand the Army Corps of Engineers, that makes perfect sense, and the additional pond. Sediment removal. The weather delays, besides the flooding you showed. Doesn't hold water with me because we had. Full subdivisions being put in and houses being built. full subdivisions being put in and houses being built and everything else, working through all that weather, doesn't make sense why they didn't work. So I really would like some answers on behalf of the people of Estacada as to why they didn't get their work done when they should have been, and they just kept delaying. Why we, it feels to me that we got pushed to the bottom of the rung. And because they thought, they felt that they could. And I want to know why we didn't hold them accountable and and to to doing that or push something. That's, that's my question I'm asking is that's ten months and I can see verifiable that I completely understand a couple of months up there. I see four months of, of delays. This, that accounts for maybe six months total. There's still additional four months here. They don't make sense. I really would like some answers to what has pushed this contractor so far? When, for a three and a half million dollars to get this done. I granted some of that was a street and they got that done real quickly. I understand that. It just doesn't make sense. It doesn't add up. And I feel like as a city, on behalf of the people, we should be holding these accountable. Just like you, what if you were building your house and your contractors behind, you'd want to hold them accountable. At least get some answers that make sense because they don't make sense to me. So that, that's, that's what I'm asking. That's what we're looking for.
And that said, I think we can fine tune it a little bit. I I think ten months was a little excessive for that kind of money that they were receiving. But at the same time, they've given the answers that we asked for, and I think that's adequate. As to right now, what we can do, I don't, there's not much we can do to change it at this point. But it will be good to see it finished. I am excited about the whole project. And we thank you for the slides and the update on that. And I think I think they were a little excessive. I think we should have pushed them a little bit harder. I agree. For the kind of money they were getting in the grant process and the value of this whole project as a whole. I think there should have been more accountability on their part. I'm sure we did get pushed back. We are a little city. But I hope in the future there will be a more app to setting a deadline that is doable. That said, I think you, you were right on the fact that it, it went over by quite a bit. And I hope we just don't get in that predicament again with a project of this size. But we appreciate you and we appreciate everything you brought forward and thank you for investigating all those things. And Jerry.
Can, can you email us that slot, the, the slides? It'll, it'll just help with the, you know, me answering questions to, you know, to people having that information. So, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
One more question. Have we made an announcement of the, of the final date? Asked the paper to put it out or something so that people know when that should be done?
I have not put that out officially because it still is. I mean, I just am a little gun shy to put out a final date until we're a little bit closer.
Would love to put it out and that way the contractors hold to a little more standard, but.
I would like, I would, I would hope that you understand that we are working as hard with them as we can to move it forward as fast as possible. The longer it takes them the less profitable it is for them also. And so it's, I know that they are working hard to get it done. But yeah, that, the estimate that the contractor gave was April fifteenth. And so I don't really see any reason why it should go longer than that. And they're, they're working hard to meet the.
Melody, maybe you could just shoot us an email with that contact information of that, that liaison that's working with that contractor. And that way we're not harassing you if we have questions.
Sure.
Just kind of free up your plate a little bit and we can ask Kim since he's working with the contractor directly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the last thing that I wanted to say, if I, if I may, it's about the stop signs on Schafford. That was, I, I believe it was I, if I was insubordinate, I apologize, but I do not remember this discussion being a direct. I don't remember being involved in the discussion about putting the stop signs on Schafford. Dawn told me the next day that you had discussed that we should just go ahead and, and get those going. So just to update so that you know that we're working on it, they're gathering some data on that road and there, there will be some stop signs placed up there on Second and Carroll along Schafford shortly. And then we'll collect some more data after those are in place. And people kind of get used to them and bring that information back to the council to say, hey, do you want to make those permanent? Or, you know, how, how do you want to move forward with that? Because so I apologize that it's been two weeks and they're not up there yet. But it's it is, it was not, I was not trying to neglect it in order from the council.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. And that is everything that I have to share.
All right. We appreciate your report. Thank you. Uh, we are now at council business. First on council business, we have Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Uh, annual report. That would be Bandoza to join us tonight. It's good to see you. Nice to have both of you in the room tonight. I'll tell you. I feel safe.
Thank you. A short slide show presentation that we'll we'll bring up here. It's just a quick review from twenty twenty. You just want to go.
Every time you try to get over the slideshow.
Yeah, if it works better to leave it like that and just use the down arrow, then that's fine with me. So all, all of the information you see here is pulled from those public dashboards that I spoke to you about on the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office website. This first slide is a overview or recap of twenty twenty two, and it just shows the, the overview of calls, high priority, medium priority, low priority, with total of two thousand eight hundred and seventy six. On this slideshow, obviously it's not interactive, but if you go to the website, you'd be able to look at that information yourself and it'll be interactive. You can scroll down and dial a little bit deeper in that if you'd like to. The next slide will show a comparison of twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. So calls went up slightly. Reality fairly flat between the two years. And I just put those two slides side by side for you. I did do a, a one-year comparison where just basically pulled the numbers from, from those slides and put it on here to show that we did have a decrease in domestic violence calls. That was the most substantial, a hundred and nine down to eighty. Restraining, violation of restraining orders was down, missing persons, behavioral health, harassment, burglary and sex abuse or sex offense. On the increase side, stolen vehicles was the most significant fraud, alarms, assist fire apartments, thefts and civil calls. Civil calls up slightly. Traffic related issues, traffic stops were slightly down from, from last year to this year, or the previous year. And traffic disorder, which is a traffic complaints. Slightly down DUIs slightly down, crashes, hit runs and parking complaints were up. And then what I did here is I, I captured our high priority calls. And these are, the, the priorities are set by CCOM, which is the dispatch center. The sheriff's office uses their information to provide this. There are a list of types of calls. Over here on the left, three hundred and fifty-two high priority calls in the city of Estacada for the year. To note, this was kind of interesting. Sixty-two percent of those calls, the majority of those calls were actually handled by Clackamas County Sheriff's Office deputies, not the contracted Estacada police. So that just shows, I know that it's one of, an express goal of the council to increase the patrols from Estacada police. This this data would, would, would show there, there'd be justification for that, just because more than half your calls are handled by Clackamas County deputies. And noting above average months, this is in the bottom left-hand corner. The months that were above average were February, March, July, August and December. In the bottom right-hand corner, it's kind of a heat map of when calls come out. And you could just kind of see by the, the change of the color, the darker the color, the heavier the call load. The calls do taper off around three AM. And the highest volume of high priority calls were domestic violence, welfare checks, DUIs, unwanted disturbance, crashes and suspicious activity. And this next slide is something new. You may have seen it already if you've gone in there in the last week to look at the dashboards from Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. It's changed slightly when you hit the dashboard tab. Instead of taking you straight to the, the previous screen. It now gives you two options and the one of them's going to be call activity and this new option is reported crimes. The basic difference between those two are we get, we get dispatched to a lot of calls throughout the county. Not all of those results in a report. And these are actual reported crimes. So these numbers should be far less than our dispatched calls. But it does account for and explain some discrepancies at times where for example, stolen vehicles on call activity was high this year compared to last year, compared to the previous years. If, remember correctly, it was twenty-six. When I pulled the information to look I could only find twenty reports of stolen vehicles. And so the discrepancy there is not every dispatched call results in a crime report. There may be and a basic example is that if somebody forgot where they parked their car and they find it around the corner, for example, then it wouldn't be a stolen vehicle. Uh, one of those I know for sure was the person called reported as stolen and it, it turned out that there were other criminal activities going on. It wasn't actually a stolen vehicle. So to give you an example of, of why you'll see that difference. But this call activity will give you a more definitive number on how many crime reports were taken in the city of Estacada. So this is, like I said, brand new. That, that was, I believe this went live last week. So that's some information that you can also dig pretty deep into. It looks a little bit different than than the layout of the other one. It takes a little bit. I'm still getting used to it. I've, I've only seen it today and then last week I was looking around at it. It works the same way with the, the color coding, the darker are the heavier calls, the lighter are the less frequent. The map is the same. There's less data in there. When you, if you try to look you'll only be able to see twenty twenty-two and this year. I believe it's going to be updated on a monthly basis. Yeah. So it'll be a little bit, a little bit different look than the other one, but I think this is, it's how it's going to stay. And since I mentioned stolen cars were up last year, one thing that I, I did notice is in, since the first of the year, we haven't had any. So in the first month and a half, we have seen a decline. But that is you know, definitely something that, that we'll want to track, keep track of.
Okay. So I got questions and concerns here I wanted to bring up with you. First of all, the, the question based on your information up there is the hit and run locations. I was wondering if you could provide more information on there and just kind of if you're able to maybe send us more of like, if there's, if they're hitting, if they're basically happening in a certain location or if it's sporadic.
Okay. I'm gonna just take some notes on my computer here. Sorry.
The second part was I saw something and a report that was emailed to us that has me a little concerned about some of the things I've been hearing about people's concerns in the city of Estacada. As I mentioned to you, I think in a separate call we had, I mentioned that people were concerned about feeling that either a law enforcement officers are having trouble either doing the job and able to do the job, things like that, you know, like, do you remember the conversation we had there? Okay. And so when the report got sent to me, this is a report that has to do with the post office incident recently. And it was a pretty well you know, the traffic and public safety talked about it. We've talked about it on Facebook. So it was a pretty well discussed conversation. So a lot of facts and that's in that call are well known. When I read through the report, I realized there's a lot of inaccuracies in this report. Addresses are not mentioned, certain like arrest locations don't line up with what the facts were of the case. And so my concern is, is when we see a report that had so much eyes on it, so much attention to it. But yet have this many inaccuracies in it. Wasn't double checked or concerned to make sure that it was actually accurate with the facts. How many other reports, incidents and issues are happening where we have that kind of work on it? And so I can start to see just by, I'm just using one report granted, but I'm going off of what I've heard about. You know, you heard a citizen today talk about how someone got jumped behind his, his restaurant, which was discussed about the mugging a while back that wasn't reported because they didn't feel like it would, that anything would happen with law enforcement. So when I kind of adding these things together, it starts to make me concerned about there might be an issue there. And I was hoping you could provide some more light onto that. And also with that issues, how much of the stats are actually correct if these reports are wrong? So I was wondering if you could provide some insight to that or something.
Sure. So the we'll talk the specific report for, for the for all, so that we're all, make sure we're all on the same page. That that incident started with a nine-one-one phone call from the post office where there was I believe it was postal worker or someone working at the post office had called it nine-one-one to say that there was somebody outside or had come in and said that somebody was threatening someone, another person with a gun. Initially, the concerns that I was asked about was the response time from the deputies and how long it took to get to that call. Being that at face value, hey, if, if someone's being threatened with a gun, why is there not a, a fast response to that type of call? I guess that the the, the rest of the story, I would say is that it was determined fairly quickly that the that the person that was making that claim was not very credible and, and the, the thought was that there was either some sort of mental health crisis or impairment or drug induced impairment, something to that effect was happening with this person. And the deputies had begun tracking down information over the phone while they were on the way out here. And so there's other information that they learned, which commonly happens when you're responding to any type of call. But especially an emergency, emergency type of call, we're trying to gain as much intel and information as we can. Once I realized that this was not a life and death situation, right? We're, we're not going to respond lights and siren and cause other dangers while we're responding. We'll, we'll slow down and handle the calls as, as things come. So it's, turned out there was a, you know, we'll, we'll just say an altered mental state with the person that had made the claim. The deputy when it was a county deputy, not a Estacada contract deputy that had responded. I think the SRO had also been on the scene. They went across the street and contacted a person who was the reported victim. That person basically cleared it up definitively that, yeah, nothing was wrong. There was no threat of a gun and, and there, there was no crime that had occurred. The person that they were speaking with, however, had a warrant for their arrest. It was unrelated. It was a warrant for the arrest for some previous charge. The deputies were able to confirm that warrant and took that person into custody and took them to jail. So this is a situation where you have a a call for service, right? That starts off as this big elephant and it turns into, you know, this tiny mouse. And a warrant arrest is fairly And uh, yeah, a warrant arrest is fairly um, like a, a low level. Uh, arrest report that we would do. It's just a space that we contacted this person who had a warrant for the rest. If if. Nothing goes awry, we took them into custody and transport them to jail. It's, it's pretty um. Uh, basic or administrative report. Um, I will admit, I, I read that report today and um, I agree with you, the, the location. Um, that was provided in the report was the post office address, not across the street where the arrest actually occurred. How that could happen is. Our CAD system talks with our report writing system and when uh, when you're entering the information in of. There's, there, there are options in there for um, information to be auto populated or selected. And because that's where they were dispatched, that was the location that that was essentially grabbed and placed in the report. It's not a, it's more of a administrative error um than a. You know, really a a intentional mistake, I would say. Um, and I would say that that, that does happen from time to time, but it, but it's, I think we'd find more likely than not, that's a. Uh, very small percentage of error that it's made in a police report. Um, I had, I talked with our records manager today and had her. Um, send that report back to the deputy and I spoke to the deputy and asked him to fix that address and then write. Uh, a little more in his narrative, explain where the, where the shed was that he had located this person uh and provide the address. Um, so. As far as providing, you know, specific addresses where things occur, that generally I would say that that happens. Um, it gets a little tricky when you are dispatched to one location and end up at another spot. Um, it'd be. Uh, incumbent on the, on, on the deputy to recognize that and to put in the correct address. More than likely, um, you know, the proper attention wasn't paid to that because it was um across the street.
Gotcha. I, I appreciate you going through that. And um, so I, I appreciate you guys correcting that. Um, like I said, if, if we could find a way to, I guess, increase that just from behalf of the people that are concerned about it. This shows that we're taking the extra step to make sure we're not only accurately reporting, but to serve the people. I really appreciate it though, chief.
Chief, um, there was a couple of uh citizens that came in and made complaints or or had mentioned. Um, three young men that had jumped a couple of people. Have any of your deputies had interactions? With similar cases in the Escada area or they had any encounters with groups of young men that fit the description for that?
Yeah, it's my knowledge, um, they have not and nothing like that has been reported yet. Um, so. You know, it's, it's a um, it's a cooperative, a cooperative thing here, right? We, and, and it's like the previous conversation that we had. We, for us to be effective to do our job, we, we need to have trust of the community. And um, I would encourage, you know, anyone that has those conversations with people to, you know, please let us know. Uh, we cannot investigate a crime unless one is reported to us. Um, and that's definitely something that we would want to know.
Appreciate it.
We thank you. That was great. Intense. You went through everything and uh even gave the answers to the questions. So I appreciate that. Uh, and always you're doing a great job. So thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, chief. I really appreciate it.
Okay, next on the list, we have a, a point, the committee leaves zones to the C four representatives. Uh. So I think we can hand this over to you. You've got a flip chart there. And see what you're all comfortable with. That is a beautiful flip chart. You're a Vanna.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna see if I can hijack Jerry's spot because that's the only one on the list that really works based upon work schedule and what's coming in there.
He's already asked and it's the only one that works for her too. So I've already.
Yeah, I'm pretty uh set on Monday afternoons being available.
But I will take the, the downtown Escada commission if nobody else uh. Nobody else wants to take that on, cause.
Yeah, I, 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 I want to pull seniority on this one because that nothing else works for me. I look at all the schedules and. I just, that's the only one that really fits for me is, is uh Monday. With a shot. I mean, come on, you gotta try something, right? Need to find something on here. Can I take primary? You take alternate?
Um, I would plan on attending everything.
Well, if nobody else, if nobody else wants it, I mean, Mon- Monday is all day work for me, so um.
I can, I can do parks because C four. I'm just alternate, so I can take parks.
The delightful group is gonna like.
No, I know.
Yeah, I'm good with mine.
I'm good with mine.
Okay, that's a good character. Thank you.
You betcha. Okay, next we're at the adoption of the twenty twenty-three dreams agreement, teams agreement, sorry, dreams. I'm dreaming it's gonna be good. So do I have a motion on the floor? We talked about this in our.
Yeah, I, I moved to approve the adoption of twenty twenty-three teams agreement.
And first.
I'll second that.
First and second, all those papers say hi. All those opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you. And next I have the adoption of the twenty twenty-three council goals that you all worked very hard to come up with. So can I have a motion on that as well?
I move to approve the twenty twenty-three council goals.
Second.
First and second, all those papers say hi. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And next we have an ordinance twenty twenty-three zero zero one, an ordinance granting to Cascade Utilities Inc. A non-exclusive franchise.
I uh, I have to declare um. Con- yeah, potential conflict of interest, so I will not be voting on this.
Okay, and Melanie, why don't you go through that?
Okay, sure. So it has been uh twelve years since the previous uh. Um, franchise agreement with Cascade Utilities, which we don't see that name very much anymore. Um, usually we see Reliance Connect. This is the uh telephone uh telecommunications franchise. Um, it is expiring this month and um, so this, the city enters into franchise agreements with utility companies. That use the city rights of way for their infrastructure. We do have Matt Day with us this evening if you had any questions, but the um. The, I went back to twelve years ago and it was, this was approved, the, the franchises were, had been being re-approved every five years. And at that point, as the city manager presented to the council, the council approved a twelve year. Because there, there wasn't that much that changes over time. And they also um. He also recommended um quarterly payments of the franchise fee versus just one annual payment and that was approved and accepted. By Cascade Utilities. And so um, I checked with city attorney. He had no additions or changes that was recommended. Uh, worked with Matt Scott and he checked with Brenda. They didn't have any recommended changes at this point. And so we're just presenting it. Um, it's an ordinance, so it would get a, it needs to be approved by the council one time. We'll bring it back and approve a second time and then it takes effect thirty days.
Uh, yeah, how long was Comcast contract? Was that ten years?
I think it was ten years.
Um, I, I think matching the same contract length would make more sense to me. Honestly, I, I prefer to move it down to five, but I, I know that's probably not a popular decision. I think with the way things change constantly these days. Having shorter uh contracts makes sense, but if anything, bringing it in, in, in line with other similar utilities makes sense to me. Um, so that we, we understand, hey, this is a normal franchise agreement of ten years because everything else is per for ten years and matching that would make sense. So.
Okay, how does everybody else feel about that? Okay, so how do we um. Change that in the. Okay, did you hear that?
Can we, can we say? Discussion. Uh, I'm, I'm with Council Licky here. Can we say it that uh, because we were, we were thinking it's ten years. Can we just say that it, we moved to bring it in alignment with the same amount of time as Comcast?
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Yeah, so, so it's equal contracts in that side. So. Um, is that, would that be work for a motion or do we need specific timeframe?
We can look it up really fast.
Okay.
She's faster than me. We're racing now.
So this amendment would be to ten years. So um, I'll go ahead and, as I proposed it, uh, I moved to approve ordinance two zero two three dashes, zeros, zeros, one. Ordinance granting to Cascade Utilities, a non-exclusive franchise with the amendment of ten years.
That meets everything. Okay, I have a first, do I get a second?
On second.
First and second, all those in favor say hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next we have. An ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zeros, zeros, two, an ordinance amending chapters three point two zero franchise agreements of the Escada municipal code. Hey, you want to explain that?
Hey, sure. I will go over this briefly. Um, so we have. Um, again, with the franchise agreements, we, we um make these agreements with other utilities that have um infrastructure in the right of ways. Right now, you know, we, the city has infrastructure in the right of ways, PGE, um Cascade Utilities, Reliance Connects, and now we have Comcast. And so um, in looking over the um, our code, I wanted to make sure, especially with two communications. I'm using similar conduits, things like that, that's um, we needed to make clarifications relating to the fi- franchise agreements with. Um, it would, it would apply to all of PGE and then any other communications company that comes in. Um, so, and those clarifications include the ownership of the facilities, the leasing of the facilities, if they choose to lease their facilities out. That these um, that the companies doing the leasing with, or blesses, blessers, which. They would all have to follow the rules of this. Um, they wouldn't slip in under. Um, you know, and kind of unobserved. It would, they all have to follow the same rules um as our code. And then also um non-interference in the right of way, so that um, it already does say there, it clarifies that when they're applying for a permit. To install utilities, they have to say how they're gonna not impact the utilities that are there, but just to clarify that um, they need to be. Non, just non-interference of other facilities that are already in the right of way. So um, it would have been slightly confusing. Because the ordinance puts together what the code, where the code changes are, but I never like how that looks because I get. Um, confused on what the code was and what it's gonna be. So that was the, with the green print, but then if you scroll down a little farther, I had. Copied and pasted the code in there and then put in red the parts that I was changing. Um, and that starts on page one fifteen. Um, so if I, the question is, is, are these clear? Do you think these are? Clarifying, I had checked with Happy Valley and I had checked with uh Karen McLeod, not Kurt, but um. Ed, I think it was Ed who I talked to um, to clarify how this should be done. And uh, so any questions?
All right, so um, I, I have concerns with the way it's written because the way it reads is no facility fixture or equipment. Shall be placed within the public right of way where the same will interfere with any existing facility fixture equipment. So the way I'm reading that is, is that gives basically an unfair advantage to existing infrastructure, meaning that. And this would be a rare case that this might come in, but it still gives that unfair advantage. If there's a place where you have two utilities coming in at the same spot. And there's not an alternate route, we'll just pick a random scenario, a box on a pole or something where they, there's already, it's a. Uh, Reliance already has a box in the place and Ca- Comcast wants to run there, but it's, it's the only route they can go. This, according to ways I read this, is that they can't run it there because there's existing infrastructure there. Would force them either to now have to lease from uh Reliance or they wouldn't be able to run it there. That gives an unfair advantage to Reliance to be able to own that particular spot. I know it's not gonna be very common, especially new construction won't be an issue. A lot of our streets have a lot of places to go through. But when you have underground utilities in a downtown area that limits locations, boxes, stuff like that. My concern would be is, is that unfair advantage and what would make better sense based upon the second part of the ordinance you wrote in there. Which was ownership of facilities, facilities designed by a franchisee and constructed pursuant to permit shall be owned and maintained by the franchisee. The one of the con- thing I'd maybe consider there would be where those conflicts exist, where there's not an alternate route that can be taken and makes sense. That that particular piece maybe be uh deemed property of the city, so that it can be equally passed and allowed for. Um, for access to all, um, all of the franchisees to pass to, whether current or future. Save Horizon wants to come out here, it's the same thing for them. If that situation does arise in that conflict, that would pass to the city. So there's no bias or there's no leasing that has to happen. It's just simply there. Um, but that's the one thing I was concerned with is just. Existing infrastructure maybe causing a roadblock that can't be bypassed by new, new incoming. Uh, franchisees. Otherwise, I didn't see an issue.
That's a really good catch there because you can kind of see where that might come into effect, but I don't know. Um, Jerry?
I have a, I've kind of, kind of a counter doubles, doubles advocate to that. Um, so in that instance, it's an unfair advantage. To the newer franchisee because the previous company has already put. The money into building that infrastructure to, you know, they've already put the money in. They've built that. That's their property. Um, what they've put in there in our right of way is they own it. You know, it's theirs. We, uh, you know, it'd be really. It, I mean, without some kind of financial compensation, it'd be, it'd be tough for me as a counselor to take away something that they. Have built to um. Grant access to somebody else that we have deemed as, you know. Grant access to somebody else that we have deemed as, you know, can come into our city and run the same, you know, and do the same thing, so. Um, I I don't agree with with that, there there has to be an alternate route. Um, you know, to running these lines, there has to be an alternate solution. Um, like I said, they they I think it would be an unfair advantage to the newer companies, you know, not not the uh. Um, previous franchisee. Just because they've already built it, they've put all, you know, their 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 hard earned money into it, hard work into it and uh. Um, that's that's their property, they own that.
Li- let me clarify, it wouldn't be where we just seize it, they no longer have it, they'd have to be properly legally, they'd have to be. Properly compensated for that so that they wouldn't lose out on that particular pieces, like if you took a piece of land or something. You have to properly compensate for it, there's there's laws around that. So the the competition would be there, it's just to remove that that bias piece out of there. Um, I don't even want to use the word bias, it's not the right word, it's just the unfair advantage if there is route and it's. Uh, Matt, you know, it's it's really rare that ever comes up, but usually it's in a downtown area, I worked in the industry, so I've I've run into the problem before. With running cables, sometimes there's not alternate routes and those routes are taken and they have to be shared. And to force a a route, sometimes it may not be uh to be leased because there's not another option. And a previous company has taken it. Now, I know you spoke with Happy Valley, but Happy Valley doesn't have the same issues because a lot of their explosive growth happened post. Multiple large companies being in the area, so when you're doing new construction, that's not an issue because you can plan out. More routes and and boxes and stuff and companies are there to provide for that. That's something you can do, but that's not a big issue, but it's existing old infrastructure where the problem comes into because. Especially like in downtown and things, we're putting things under the under the road, that's separate, we can put things over there for that. But where existed and we're not tearing up road or we don't have a lot of of alternate passes where the problem is. And it's just trying to take that little piece out so that if it runs into it, we're not. They're not running into a problem later, it just it basically looking forward to try to deal with problems before it happens, it may never come up. But if it does and it happens, that's a problem and it could potentially be on the city too for it being in our ordinances, they're granted unfair advantage to one side, so.
Hey, Melon?
Um, and if you want um you want Matt to speak to that, you might be able to speak to a little of the technology that is, you know, would that be? Would it go either way?
I'd like to hear from that.
Okay, but also I did, it was Edward, Edward Hodges at Karen McLeod, and when I was asking him questions about this, he said that the. The comms company should own their own conduits, we have never seen it otherwise was. Um, because I was like, is this something that's standard, that do we designate this, you know, that that they own their own, because I was not completely familiar with it. Um, and he said, yeah, that he's never seen it elsewhere, so that's why I was confident, just putting putting it in here, they need to own it, they need to maintain it. Um, but again, that is, that's what I'm asking for is is it clear that that's what we're saying and yeah, if you have a question for Matt, you could.
Matt, can you step up the mic and just kind of help us out here? You're the expert.
Put you on the spot a little bit, but.
It's been so long, I I had to have you up there.
So I can see what you're saying, like. You know, if we're already in a ditch or something where Comcast or PGE or whoever, you know, we don't want to block them, obviously. Where I think. We have an issue and we'd like some clarification with the code and I, you know, asked for some clarification for Melanie, I think she's done an excellent job is. We've had other cities or one other city in particular uh where we serve. And we have conduit and facilities in the ground. And another company, a cable company will come in and say, oh, there's conduit there and they dig it up. Cut a hole in the conduit, pull our wire out, pull their wire in. And we need something to in the code that says.
Yeah, and I I get that.
There's and if that could be. Fixed to.
My my concern is having something in there for the clause where it says where there are conflicts that can't be resolved, otherwise basically. If they can't put the conduit next to yours. Or something along a pole, I mean, something along those lines where, like I said, I'm sure you've run into conflict with other companies if you're in other cities. Um, I know I know when I worked in the industry about it. Five, six years ago, maybe longer, it's been a while now. We 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 used to run line, it was um out of Jack Communication, that area, I'm sure you've heard of them. These run, they ran a lot of telecom uh telecommunication lines and they'd run into the problems occasionally in small cities, especially where it's pre-existing. Infrastructure downtown, they couldn't always run things they wanted to, and so they'd run into conflicts with. Other people being in the way, how they work it out, usually it came down to having to pay the leasing, which gave an unfair advantage. To to the existing infrastructure because a new company can't have a free access, and so all I'm trying to do is put something in place that allows if it comes up. The city basically can take, can, you know, by legal means, take possession of whatever it's a box or if it's a particular route, if we have to. To basically give for access, I don't see a lot of that coming up, but it's still a possibility, I just think our code needs to be written. In a way that gives that fair access should the uh incident occur, because as it is now, it's written and passed. You guys can just say, well, no, we don't want to lease it to you or we're going to charge you a larger fee, I'm saying you guys would. But it could go the other way just as much against you guys as well if there's something else comes up. What I'm saying is, let's write it fair, let's do it right the first time and eliminate potential conflicts.
I have just a thought, if if that's the one that's really the issue, no fixture, facility fixture equipment. Shall be placed within the public right of way where the same will interfere with any existing. That uh facility fixture equipment, if if you want to take that out, I think it's not a sticking point, I mean farther down in our code. Um, just the next paragraph down, when they're applying for permits. It says they need to provide a summary of the construction methods to be employed and performance. Uh, in performing the work and the means to be used to protect existing structures. So it's it's a li- it's a little softer, it doesn't say, don't interfere with them, but it says you need to show us how you're going to put this in and not interfere. I'm not not, that's the wrong word, um and not, you're going to protect the existing structures that are there. Um, and so if that.
I think that reads much better, I I'm happy with that.
I I can.
It's softer without so much angular there and it gets the point across too, so I think that solves both issues.
Uh, is that uh?
So are we are we proposing removing that first? Insert there, the no facility fixture or equipment and just letting that go by and.
Yeah, and using existing.
And then use. I I can, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think that's a fair.
And and from uh Mr. Day, does that make sense?
Yeah, as well too. Can I clarify one thing first for what Joel said? When he said, you know, maybe the city will own the conduit uh going to the homes. Or, you know.
Well, in a in a random rare case, I I'm when I picture it, I picture either utility box on a pole or some sort of. Particular issue with underground pathing or something in the downtown area possibly would be why I pictured most of the problems potentially being because that's been my experience.
Well, I was just, I was just saying that if the city did want to go that route. You know, all when you call eight one one before you dig. They would be responsible for all the locating. You know, all the maintenance and the repair and the moves and the changes and adds, so there's a big workload there and furthermore, our company has built. Majority of that infrastructure.
Oh, I I understand that, I I'm I'm not disgrading that at all, and you guys put a lot of work into it over the years, putting a lot of stuff in there. I'm just like, I'm just trying to make sure it's it's fair and equal access in the code. Equity. Um, but the I I think we solved the problem by removing that one line, so thank you, Matt, appreciate it.
Thank you. So by removing that first um. The first statement, no facility fixture or equipment shall be placed within the public right of way where the same will interfere with any existing facility fixture or equipment. We remove that. But then the other two, the ownership and the um leasing the facilities, saying that the the. Lesses or licensees must still comply with the terms of this chapter. Um, are those?
Yeah. Y- yeah, do you need me to craft in a motion? All right, since I'm the one causing trouble here.
Sure, give it a whirl.
Okay, uh, I moved to approve ordinance two zero two three dash zero zero two and ordinance amending chapter. Three dot two zero franchise agreements of the Estacada Estacada Municipal Code. Uh, with amendment of removing proposed no facility. Fixer or equipment shall be replaced, sorry, shall be placed within the public right of way. Where the same will interfere with any existing facility fixture or equipment. Uh, located in three dot twenty dot zero two zero permit requirements subsection A.
Wow. Okay, you've heard it, um, that's motion on the floor, for a second?
All second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Yeah, motion passes, thank you. If we get all that clear, is there?
Yes, and this will be coming back for a sec, both of those ordinances, the franchise and then this amendment to chapter three point two. Will be coming back for a second um reading and approval. Um, so you'll see it again.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Do you want to do the thriving communities grant?
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Okay. Yeah, let me go back to that and then we'll we'll save the. Planning prep for the joint workshop with planning commission till last.
Okay.
Okay, and Elena, I think might be on there and she might be best to speak to this, this um thriving communities grant is a. A stat, I'll just kind of read over this, staff submitted a letter of interest for this grant back in November, it's a federal grant. Uh, which provides technical assistance, planning and capacity building in the areas of. Um, transportation, economic development, housing, land use, healthcare and education. It was a nationally competitive grant opportunity, so. You know, we had high hopes when we put it in, but a lot oftentimes in a situation like that, then you know, you just get the thank you for applying letter. Um, but we made it to the next round and so right now they're wanting, there's a letter that's in the packet. Um, and so if this is approved, then the mayor would sign the letter saying that um. That will support what it takes to do this um grant and if Elena's there and wants to share a little bit about it.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, no problem, so this is the, I know this can seem kind of nebulous and it is kind of nebulous. Because this is the first time this has ever been done, this is a brand new program. With the uh US Department of Transportation and the whole idea is that it is. Individualized by each community, so we're going to be the ones setting the projects and the program um. And the scope of activities. So so it, I know it seems very nebulous if you read the whole thing and that's because we get to set it if we get selected. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so.
So we could determine, we could go by council priorities or projects that we're needing to do anyway. And implement this and get the consultation services to technical assistance services to.
Yes, a- and looking at the goals that that we were working on. Um, there's a lot of goals that I think that this could really help us with. Including a lot of the economic development ones like development of family wage jobs, analysis of business gaps. And then engaging more of the unincorporated Estacada, which I know that we've talked about, especially as we're looking at transportation. Um, and evacuation planning and all those things are things that we can focus on with this technical assistance.
Okay, any questions?
Uh, Joel?
You had a couple, the couple of questions I had is uh one, who would be choosing the projects?
We would be choosing the projects.
Like who's we?
So.
The council chooses it or is there a separate committee or some staff or what?
Well, not not the staff, I'm I'm assuming that the council would choose the projects in cooperation with, will probably form like a community committee.
Okay, second question I had is, there was a list of particular um. Nonprofits that were reached out, uh reached out to community engagement. Um, my question is. Ooh. Where did the selected um organizations that were in here? Come from that you reach out to these ones, well, not others or. Uh, and this is more, I think, going forward things, do we have a better way to make this known for things like this to nonprofits in the area? Because it seems like the city constantly reaches out to the same ones and other ones seem to be left aside. And so my question is, do we have a better way of making this known to nonprofits that? Maybe want to participate early on and it does say that we can add them in later, I get that. But I think this is more of a process issue that we have with nonprofits overall. Um, anywhere from religious-based nonprofits to um, you know. General community service nonprofits a- and so on, it is, I I kind of constantly seeing the same type of ones coming in here and so. My 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 question is, where's that list coming from and? How how do we improve that process?
So I can chime in there, hi, this is Taylor, um. Uh, and I was part of the process of getting the um letters of commitment together. For this, um, well, it wasn't really an application, it was a letter of preliminary interest for the grant, but um. Yeah, we have a few nonprofits that have been really consistent in um. Responding and and showing up to, you know, and volunteering for city participation, so those were the folks that we prioritized. Um. And if I recall, I think there was a pretty short turnaround time for us to get that letter in. So we were really prioritizing, okay, who do we know, who can we basically count on? Getting letters into us um pretty quickly for us to submit this letter of interest. But we. Definitely were, you know, intending on, we knew that there would be the opportunity for. Many other community partners, organizations to participate in the future, so it wasn't like a mutually, it wasn't an exclusive. Um, type of thing.
Okay. Um, I just know it's one of our council goals has been and we've shown some good progress in that area with moving forward with getting other um. Nonprofits in area and including them, with, you know, we've done some things with the uh. As as the circuit connects, the one we do in every every other month here in the morning or in the evening, like the one coming up here.
The what's up, Estacada?
That one, can never get that name in my head.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and and we do have, we have increased participation with our nonprofit groups with that. Um, but as Taylor said, this was like, we had like a week to turn this around, we found out about it.
Gotcha, I'm. So, all right, I I think you answered my questions, I I had quite many about those, so.
Yeah, Mike, yes.
Does the existing staff have the capacity to take on this project without? I mean, are the, are you guys looking at needing additional staff or the existing staff's going to be able to take care of everything?
What what we feel like is that this would um, this would help us with some of the projects that are already on the goal list. So so it's kind of like we're bringing in consultant to be like the half staff that would help us with projects that are already on our goals.
Great.
Okay, great.
The things we're going to need to do anyway, this could assist us.
Possibly reducing staff time even.
You never know, or increasing capacity of staff.
Any more questions on that, no? All right, let's put it for a motion then, you good?
What are you done too, it's your guys' turn.
Motion on the floor.
I moved to approve the thriving communities grant. Is that ordered correctly?
Yes, that would, that would be great.
First and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Then on the last one, we have the preparation for the joint uh workshop with planning commission.
Yes, and Taylor, I think is going to say, thank you, Elena, and you can stay if you need to, but I think um Taylor was going to help out with this. Discussion, we're getting ready um. To have uh your next, your next meeting will be a joint workshop with planning commission, you know, I'll just, I'll just stop and let Taylor. Go ahead.
Okay, Taylor, take it away.
Yeah, so um. At the planning commission's last meeting, they uh received the same list of code issues that you have in front of you. And um, I I think we've talked about this list a few times over the past like two. Or more years, um, various city staff have been. Basically just keeping track of problems that we run is run into with our code. Um, most of the things on your list are from the development code, so title sixteen, but there are a few things that. Um, our code enforcement officer has brought us from other sections of the code too. And this, so the list that you have there is just the list of this list of code issues that we are aware of that. Um, we staff recognize either need to be changed, some of them are. More urgent than others, um, need to be addressed, you know, in the coming year. Um, or maybe should be addressed, or some of them are things that um, maybe it's not urgent or necessarily. Uh, required, but maybe it's something the council would like to look into. So the planning commission um. You know, looked over this list, asked some questions about what. You know, kind of some details about the nature of some of the issues, so they did have some discussion about it. Um, and. We asked them to send us their list of, you know, what are, what are the issue, what issues from this list are kind of their. Top five things that they would want to discuss at your joint workshop that's coming up um. In about two weeks. And or exactly two weeks rather, and um. We also o- opened up the option, you know. we also o- opened up the option, you know, we recognize that there are other issues related to you know, growth management or just kind of the future of the city. Other issues related to, to growth or how things are developing or just, you know, how things might be changing related to the economy or planning related things. Um, and so if there's anything that's not on this list, we ask them to, um, include that in their list of kind of top five things that they want to talk about or that they would hope to talk about, um, with you all at the joint workshop on the twenty seventh. And so we'd like to pose the same question so that we can, um, get an understanding of what are the priorities for this conversation? Um, and I, I keep using the phrase growth management, um, to sort of orient everyone around what I'm imagining this conversation will, will be about, because I get the feeling from all of your various comments and conversations that managing the growth is a priority. Um, but it's really ultimately up to you all, so, um, thinking about your council goals, thinking about how growth is happening, the concerns that you're aware of in the community. Um, we just want to know what are the issues that you want to address related to planning and growth and economic development, um, and hopefully we'll be able to talk through most of those things at your joint workshops.
Okay. Thank you, Taylor, for that. So what do you need from us tonight?
So tonight, um, you could, if you already know what your top five are, you can feel free to circle them or write them on the paper that we just handed out, or you can email us later if you want to think about it a little bit. Um, or if you have questions, um, you know, before before the next workshop that you want us to look into, any, anything that would help you to prepare for working through this with the planning commission and planning staff.
Okay.
Yeah, and for, and for tonight, I, I wanted to make sure that if there are any questions specifically about um, any of the items that are on that list of code issues, um, if you have any questions about those, you know, I'm here to answer what I can.
Okay, are there any questions to that? Not seeing your hands raised, so I think this is pretty self-explanatory. All right, well, we can do that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Taylor. Thank you.
Can I just chime in here real quick, sorry, Mayor, um, if, if we do have questions, or what, what kind of deadline, what kind of timeline? If we email these to you or turn these into you, what, what are you looking at if we do have questions or seeking clarification? Who would we contact to get that clarification?
The, the sixteenth, we would like to have them back, so that would be by Thursday. Um, because we'll be setting the agenda, that's the date we have set the agenda by.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then do we follow up if we have questions with you or Taylor or either or?
Either or, I would recommend Taylor. But feel free to, to ask me too. If I don't know, I'll ask Taylor.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and I'll just kind of add on to that, if you do miss the, the deadline of the sixteenth, um, we still will be more than happy to receive, um, your questions anytime ahead of the meeting, because as Melanie said before, it really helps everyone if, if you've got a question that we do have to kind of gather information or do some research on. Um, if we can do that ahead of the meeting rather than during it or rather than, than having to follow up later. Um, I think that's, that's for everyone's time, so, yeah, we appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we don't need a consensus on anything or vote or anything on that, okay. Moving along, we're at the next citizen and community group comment, I have none in front of me. Um, if any of you wish to speak, and you have one now, now is a good time to hand it in. Otherwise, we're going to move on, okay, the mayor council reports and comments. So I will start with Mike, far in.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out, appreciate the staff for all the work that they're putting in. Excited to see the Main Street project getting closer to a final design and, um, yeah, thank you everybody for their time.
Yeah, all.
Thanks as well and, uh, thanks for the great discussion tonight as well too.
And Joel?
Thanks staff, I know I, uh, be kind of targeted on my stuff, I wish the chief was still here, I'd thank him for his time and, um, so it's not on my hair still, I can't, anyways, uh, thank you guys for coming out and, uh, see you next time.
Uh, just thanks, everybody, oh, sorry. I thought he said my name. I just want to thank everybody for coming out and, um, again Kurt for coming out and I really feel like he is, um, listening to the community and as well as the council and just um, instead of completely revamping Main Street and going wild, it's, it's more along the lines of what Estacada represents and I appreciate them taking the time, the fact that we were able to have a nice discussion about that and um, with that said, I hope everyone has a nice evening.
Um, I'd like to thank city staff, I'd like to thank everybody for being here, it's really important to stay civically engaged, it affects our daily life. Uh, thank you, Numpa, that was a great presentation.
Um, I'm going to say pretty much the same thing, thank you guys for coming, thank you guys for staying throughout this, uh, Nuppa, thank you very much for your presentation, it was great information, Matt, thank you for stepping in and giving us some good info. Staff, you're amazing as always, appreciate you. Um, the one thing I do want to add, um, is, uh, you know, going over with Chief Mendoza, you know, there were a couple of pretty big incidents that apparently happened in Estacada, I don't have firsthand knowledge, just, you know, what I've read on social media and what I've heard. Um, and they were described tonight, but they weren't reported to Clackamas County, they weren't report, reported to the police, so in order for us to get the data to make the right decisions, crimes need to be reported. No matter how you feel about, you know, the, the, the police situation that we're in, crimes need to be reported. Whether it's by dialing nine one one or non-emergency, um, but in order for us to be able to make the right decisions on you know, on how much more staffing the city needs, how much, you know, what direction we need to go with the police force, we need, we need this cooperation with, uh, the community, we need these crimes reported. Um, otherwise, we're not getting all the, all the information. And, uh, you know, the, the police, the sheriff's office needs that information to give us, you know, informed and accurate data. Um, and again, we, you know, that's the only way we're going to be able to make these decisions is with, you know, accurate data, so I just, I'm, I'm asking the community, just, you know, you see a crime in progress, in progress, you know, reported. Again, whether it's nine one one or the non-emergency number, but we, you know, we can't fix what we, you know, we can't fix things that we don't know are happening. Um, the police, the sheriff's office can't fix things if they don't know that they're happening. So, um, I just, like I said, I implore you to, um, report these crimes, so muggings happen. You know, we, we have that data. So that's all I've got, thank you guys.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. And I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, of course, it's nice to see Matt, I haven't seen him in a while. And Nuppa, great work, you know, keep doing what you're doing, I mean, thank you for coming out tonight, you told us all about it. You thank the police services for their work, obviously they're doing their job and trying to fine tune it, and we can give them all the help we can, so we appreciate them, appreciate everyone in councils for coming out and being a part of this process, because it takes the city. And we thank staff for everything that they do, so thank you, that's it, uh, this meeting is adjourned.